All right. Good evening, everybody. We will call this meeting of the City Council for the City of Lathar Village to order, and I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Roll call. Mayor Brock.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett.
Present.
Councilmember Ferguson. Councilmember Manorino Thompson.
Present.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilman Ferguson. He had said there's an outside chance he might be able to get back here before the meeting's over, but just in case.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Councilman Ferguson from this meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion carries. Invite all of you to join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Consent agenda is first, council. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes of the study session and regular meetings that were held on Monday, August 21st, and the approval of minutes for the study session held on September 11th. If, could, would someone approve the, excuse me, move the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
So moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion carries. Our next item is to consider the approval of the dispersment report, reports, I guess I should say. The first is for the period from August 1st through August 15th of 2017, in amounts totaling The second is for the period of August 16th through August 31st of 2017, in amounts totaling I would ask council members if there is any, there is a lot of detail that behind the summary reports. Does anybody have any questions or comments concerning the various parts of the agenda?
I had a question. I mean, it's very low. It's a low price, but there's a towing for a Ford Escort. Do we have a Ford, a Ford Escort?
That was our, that was for our assessor's vehicle. He had, was down on one of our dirt roads and...
It was for who? What?
Our assessor.
Oh, the assessor.
The city assessor had...
We probably have residents that figure they should just be left there.
It was our assessor, and he had some problems with his car, so we asked quality towing if they would tow it. So, he's going to reimburse the city back for that.
Oh, okay.
Any others? Questions or comments?
I don't have any.
If not, could we have a motion to accept the dispersment report?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. The next item is the acceptance of the various departmental reports, which includes the Police Department report, which was given to you this evening, the building permit projects that were listed, the report of the Parks and Recreation Director. Covered all?
Yes.
Okay.
That was all of them.
Any questions on any of those reports? If not, could we have a motion to accept them?
I just noticed this animal bite on, on the report.
Is that on the police report?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, it's an animal bite, and in case it comes up, the dog was removed from the home, and so there's no issues, nothing. I'm just wondering if, are we keeping track?
You recall that one?
I am not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the dog. I'm just wondering, are we keeping track of, with animal, with dogs, the dog issue being a big thing to our residents? It's good that he was removed, but whenever I see dog bites...
Yeah, it doesn't look like, just reading this, this is the first time reading of it, to understand he did not wish to prosecute and only wants the dog removed from the residence. So that I would defer to the Police Department on it. I haven't seen a citation.
Okay.
Chief, do you have anything to add there?
Yeah, the homeowner...
Sorry.
No problem. Sorry.
Go to the microphone, or else...
They can't hear me. I usually speak pretty loud, so I usually don't need one of these, but the short of this story was, the individual was riding, residing in that home and was bitten by the dog. He ended up seeking medical treatment, and the homeowner and dog owner decided to remove the dog from the premises without any intervention from us.
But he wasn't any of the dogs that we've been having issues with?
No, ma'am. No.
Shoot, okay. That's what I was hoping. Well, there's a couple of dogs that people are, people are really concerned with, that they're concerned, they're taking walks and getting chased and bitten, so I didn't know if that was...
But that is a good question. Are, you know, someone keeping track of the dog incidents? Because it looks like there's a couple more dog complaints in the packet.
Yeah.
So I don't know who I'm asking, but...
And are they funneling to the committee?
That's my question.
To the, to the animal committee?
Not yet. The Police Department has a certain amount of enforcement responsibility, and then if it, what, it goes to the courts?
Yeah, that's a, there's a, there's some discretion there about whether or not it gets issued a citation that goes to the district court, or whether or not it gets referred to the Animal Review Board.
There is an Animal Review Board, so, so far, we have not had any cases rise to that level yet, but there's probably a couple that are on their way there, I would say, based on incidents that have happened in the community.
I think it's just good that we have an eye on every incident with dogs, so, okay.
We're at that magic time on the agenda where we invite those, what?
I do have a question. Could you, this is the report, so this is where Parks and Rec's report comes under this, too?
Well, she had both. I just stuck it under this one, and then...
But we'll be talking about the other...
That'll be separate.
Okay. That's the question.
That's under action requests?
Okay.
Okay. Am I okay now?
You are.
Still the motion, Mr. Mayor, to accept the departmental reports?
Yeah. Do I, do I have a motion to accept the departmental reports?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion carries. Now, we're at that magic part of our agenda where we invite those in the audience who wish to discuss issues that are not listed on the agenda, and I say not listed. I know there are some people here that are here for a ZBA hearing. We will get to that on a separate part of the agenda, so we don't have to discuss it twice. Is that all right? So is there anyone who wishes to address the council, or ask any questions, or something that is not contained on the agenda elsewhere? This is your chance to ask you to step to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record, and, and fire away. Hearing none. Well, we're getting off easy tonight, folks. So far.
So far.
Now, we have, we have advertised for public hearings this evening. We have three items in the public hearing. The first one is a tabled item, which is a variance request for 18505 West 12 Mile Road. Do I understand we have had no due information there?
That's my understanding, Mr. Mayor, that there's been nothing submitted to the city on that.
So we would leave that one tabled?
Yes.
Is that all right?
This is for, was the 26237?
It's a 18505.
185.
West 12 Mile.
West 12 Mile. The next one is, I'm sorry, what?
I'm good.
Variance requests for 26237 Southfield Road. This is a sign variance, I believe. Is that the one?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. The city did receive a variance request from Section 52-27, subsection B3, as it pertains to signs located on the roof of a building. This applicant is proposing a sign and has already placed the sign above the roof line on the business at that address, 26237.
Is the applicant here this evening?
Is this the sign that Councilmember Kelly was speaking about?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Has the wrong colors? Okay. So, so...
It's this one.
The one that you can't see the colors because it's a black and white.
Okay.
You can all tell that these are colors not allowed in our sign ordinance.
So really, there are two issues, right, with the sign being...
This one. Because we already gave a variance before for, I think it's a, yeah, because there, I think it's next door, there's a sign that's elevated.
We have a few buildings in town.
Yeah, the way I, the way I, this appears to me, the applicant has only applied for one variance. In fact, they won't, the only thing I have is a sign permit application. I don't actually have ever received a ZBA variance request, but in talking to Mayor Pro Tem, it does appear that the colors of the sign, which were not reflected on the photographs provided, and due to the lack of information on the sign application, those colors are not permitted under our ordinance, so that would be an additional variance request that the applicant would need.
I would.
So I...
The colors on the sign are red, white, and blue.
Right.
And it's a bright red, white, and blue. But because of our ordinance, it is only the colors that is under our ordinance, I don't believe red is even...
Red is not a...
A part of it.
No, it's a shade of maroon, which I'm not an artist, but maybe red is a shade of maroon, I don't know.
The, it would seem to be inappropriate act would be then for us to table the item with the instructions that staff should have the various requests amended to, to address both of the issues that we've talked about. One is the placement of the sign, the second would be the variation on the required colors, or a variance for the required colors.
And a complete zoning variance application that I would request, and perhaps I just don't have that, but that's something that I think the applicant should, should provide to the city.
Well, I think we have in the packet what we got, I mean, what was submitted.
We got a sign permit application.
Yeah, which is not sufficient. Okay.
All right.
That's how you handle these things quickly, and, not that it makes the applicant happy, you understand.
Do we motion to...
Well, this is just a public...
I need a motion to table this item, ma'am.
Yeah, it's just a public hearing.
So, did, did they come in and...
Yes, public hearing.
To fill this out? They came in to fill this application out? I'm just wondering, there, could there...
They should have been instructed properly at that time, that's right.
Yeah, I mean, the, there's a special variance request that needs to be made, right?
Correct.
Because there's a portion on here where they, where they filled out, there's a, there's a portion that says, is a variance required? If so, described below, and they did.
Yeah, a sign placement.
But apparently, they weren't aware that there was a separate application process they needed to go through.
Correct. That, that would be the assumption I would make based on this information, and then I would also, logic would stand to dictate that they perhaps did not pay the zoning variance fee that's required.
Ooh, okay.
That's something that maybe somebody could follow up on.
And we don't work for free.
Yeah.
Works we do, though, don't we?
Yeah, so we, we need to follow up with that.
All right. So we'll waive the first two public hearings. And variance requests for 18550 San Diego Boulevard. Those folks are here. So, Mayor, if you could step to the microphone, whoever is going to act as spokesperson, tell us a little bit about what you're proposing to do, and what the variance is you need to have considered.
I'm sorry. For 26237, are we going to table?
Well, this is just the public hearing portion, so when it comes up on the agenda, we can table it.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Mike Weber. We, Carl Schaefer and I are the residents who live at 18550. We have a very small house, a very small one, car garage, and we have lots of things that we store in them.
We have lots of things.
Yes. Two 12-foot kayaks, a 12-foot, 6-inch extension ladder, and all sorts of equipment, so we need the shed to store all this stuff. And we need a 14-by-10, so it's long enough so we can put everything in it. If we only go for an eight-foot roof, the pitch won't be sufficient, according to the shed manufacturer, so we need a taller height, which is why we're applying for the variance.
You want it 10 feet?
Yes.
Height.
There was also mentioned to me, I think, by the staff person who we have talked with, that the eight-foot, or that the 10-foot is a more common way it's manufactured anyway.
According to the shed manufacturer, that's correct. I'm not an expert at that by any means.
I just thought I'd help you along.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Maybe the only time I ever helped you out. That's it. Okay.
So it's just a height issue, it's not anything relative to your neighbors?
So the question before us is whether to grant a variance for the height of the shed?
Yes.
Is that correct? Because the other, everything else is...
It's 140 square feet, and it's going to be five feet from the fence.
So, that will be the only issue at stake. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to be heard on this? I understand there are a couple neighbors who are violently opposed. I guess not. Okay. Again, give us your name and address for the record.
Robert Dugan, 18568?
68.
68. Our neighbors, we always flip them. I'm here with my, my lovely wife, Filsa, and we are the meeting next-door neighbors, and we are here in support of the variance to allow their shed to be an additional two feet taller.
Is that in a direct line of sight?
Yeah, we're there very next door, and we would be able to see this, yes.
Yeah, we can see right out our kitchen and diner windows. Right over, it'll be...
You don't find that objectionable?
No.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to be heard on this matter this evening? Hearing none? We will declare the public hearing closed on that item, and we'll move on, and I would ask the City Council to move to go to recess from the City Council agenda and reconvene as the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So, second.
So moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries one to nothing. The, I'll call the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. This is known as being able to be judge and jury, so it's always fun to do. There is a set of minutes in your packet from our last meeting as the Zoning Board of Appeals. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
None.
Could we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second.
It's moved. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Item C is the question of the zoning variance for 26237 Southfield Road. This would be an appropriate time for the motion to table this item until the next meeting of the ZBA.
I make a motion that we table the variance request for 26237 Southfield Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. That item is tabled to our next ZBA meeting. Next, the ZBA will consider motion to approve or deny the zoning request with custody for 18550 San Diego Boulevard.
I'll make the motion to... I don't have that thing in front of me. What else do I have to say? Because I don't have the paper in front of me. I'm trying to get to it, and it's going fast enough. No, they, um...
Doesn't have that.
Oh. I make a motion.
I second. I second the motion.
To approve the variance?
To approve the zoning variance request for 18550 San Diego Boulevard. The height variance of 10 feet.
Yes.
We make a motion.
Because of the practical difficulty that a lower roof line will not permit the storage of the items they need to store.
Yes.
Does that sound correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Sounds correct. I would just clarify, it's a two-foot variance, not a 10-foot variance. They're not building an 18-foot tall.
So I make the motion for a two-foot variance for the shed at 18550 San Diego.
There you go.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Is there?
Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion to approve these variance requests, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries, and you are hereby approved.
Thank you.
So you go forth and shed, all you want. All right.
And you know you're going to accumulate as much stuff as you have room to store, right? You know?
Could you ask?
Not about them.
I got a car that I can actually put in the garage now.
There's no additional business to come before the Zoning Board of Appeals, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn the Zoning Board of Appeals, and to let us reconvene as the City Council again.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. We will then move on to item nine, which is the action items for the City Council. First is a tabled item from the last meeting. The City Council will consider an independent contractor contract with Tatiana Kitlek for the dance program. This was tabled because of some concerns about some language about who is...
Response.
Who's indemnifying whom.
Indemnifying whom, and I understand that this revised one now has it correct. Is that, City Attorney, can you speak to that?
Yeah, that is correct, Mr. Mayor. There was the initial draft of this contract had the city indemnifying the independent contractor for anything that may have gone on. I did reword that so that the independent contractor would be required to indemnify the city for anything that may occur as a result of this contract.
That's wonderful.
Yes.
Don't we have to take it off the table first?
You know what? You are absolutely right.
I'm just trying to keep going, tell us.
I was just informed that I'm out of order again, so the need here is to take this item off the table, so I need a motion to remove this item.
Is that the motion I just made, or is that the other one? Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Now, the question before I give us the independent contractor contract for the dance program.
So it was brought up then with the indemnification was taken care of, and then we got the clarity about Cliff not being involved with having to be here to open the building and to be present, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, I'm good.
All right. So is there a motion to approve that contract?
I'll make the motion to approve the independent contractor contract with Tatiana Kitlek for dance, for dance program, for the dance program.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next is another tabled item. City Council considering a motion to approve the city administrators recommending, recommendation conpointing the current interim police chief Lieutenant Scott. The, again, this is an item that I need a motion to remove this, item from the table.
So moved. I make a motion that we remove it from the table.
From the table.
Items, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. The item is now removed from the table. Madam Acting City Administrator, would you describe what steps have taken place since our last meeting, and what the recommendation is before council this evening says?
Okay. Council had asked that we go out for posting of the job and interviews for the police chief job, so we did go out and we did a posting. The postings were, the applications were brought back. We had about 21 applications. We had a panel of five individuals go through those applications and pick out their top five candidates. Their five, top five candidates were called for interviews. We had one interviewee that did back out for the reason of she did accept another job at that time, but on May, or Monday, September 11th, all the interviews were held. We, there was a panel of three people that did the interviews, and it was anonymous that it was chosen that Lieutenant Scott McKee would be the best candidate for the position of our police chief for the City of Lathar Village.
And that is the recommendation?
And that is the recommendation.
To this group this evening?
Yes.
So, the appropriate action would be?
To make a motion.
A motion, I'm sure, to...
Motion for confirmation of the interim city administrator's selection is Lieutenant Scott McKee is the police chief.
So moved. Second.
So, any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries. Mr. McKee, you have...
Yay!
You have, you have our heartfelt condolences.
You are the boss.
We, so, I'm sure that you've been rehearsing how to blame, you know, Sergeant Sane for anything that goes wrong, so you'll be all set for that. Good. Now, congratulations. We're glad to have this item settled, and we wish you well, and, I don't know, do you want to say anything?
Oh, speech.
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 Is he going to get up here and say he doesn't accept?
If he does, we're going to get, he's got that basket of rotten fruit under the table there if he does that.
He does have to accept, right?
Does.
Does, uh...
I accept.
You accept?
I accept. I look forward to the challenge. I appreciate the City Council giving me the opportunity to, you know, lead this department into the future. I look forward to the challenge. It's been nine months as the interim police chief, and I've had a number of opportunities to kind of evaluate and analyze and look at what we need to do, and have a plan of action. We're looking, looking to attack recruiting and get some educated people in here that can help push our agenda of community policing, push that forward, and look at training and education. We really need to get with our partners, our neighboring departments, and, and get on board with all the current trends of training and, and, you know, move into the future. So I look forward to it. I thank you again for the opportunity. I thank Ms. Barachi. She, her devotion and dedication to the city is, it's just unbelievable. She spends, sometimes spends all night here, so I really want to...
Don't, don't give that to me.
Don't give that away.
Just want to, just want to really thank you for all your hard work and dedication.
The fact that we have a GPS collar on us is exciting.
Sometimes I think we need more. Thank you again.
Thank you for your hard work while you waited. It was, we're so appreciative. We appreciate it.
I've never had, very seldom I had the situation where we've had someone who's acting in a... I've never had, very seldom I had the situation where we've had someone who's acting in a role, who arrives at the first day of doing that job and comes prepared with a hundred-day plan of things that he wanted to get fixed, corrected, brought up to date, many of, many of which have been accomplished during his interim period, and we appreciate that. But we're, look forward to working with you as we move the department into the future. So thank you again. All right, moving on to item nine C. You have in your packet an approve, or a slate from Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool for candidates to be reelected to their board. I serve on their companion board, which is for the Workers' Compensation Fund for the state of Michigan, Michigan Municipal League. And the individuals, I can just say that because both these boards happen to meet at the same time normally, not at the same, not the same time exactly, but same dates usually, I've had an opportunity to get to know all of these that are on the list this time for reelection to the property pool. This is where we consure, our various cities around the state ensure together and form a liability pool so that we get more cost-effective rates for insurance coverage for property and liability. So I would recommend we cast our official ballot for the people named.
Well, I'll make a motion that we affirm the nominations as provided by the MML Property and Liability Pool and authorize the city clerk to notify the MML before November thirteenth, twenty seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next, Pam. Leaf collection.
Yes, for the pit.
It's hard to believe it's time to do that almost, doesn't it?
It does.
But after the temperatures we've had the last few days. Go ahead, Pam.
We have been contracting with the city of Ferndale to take our leaf collection and store them at the, or their yard at Ferndale, which is closer for us than where we used to take them. We've been doing this probably for the last five years. This year, the, they've held their prices steady for the last four years. This year, there is a slight increase in the price that they're going to be charging us. But we would still like to use them as our go-to for our leaf collection so that we are close by where we can drop them and then get back here to pick up leaves in the neighborhoods again.
When does leaf pickup start? When the leaves start falling.
It was in the, it was in the newsletter.
Yes, in the newsletter, but I do not know when.
I think it's early October, maybe, but I, I don't know.
Yeah, I know. They are starting to tra, turn over the trucks for leaf and things like that.
Hey, I'll make, are you ready for the motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the agreement for leaf collection storage with the city of Ferndale and authorize Acting City Administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
What was the increase? I was just curious about.
The host, the host fee was forty-five-dollar increase, and the estimated labor, I think, was like a hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase.
Okay.
So. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Now, Pam.
Once again.
Thought you've named the new chief, we find out he wants a new car.
Boy, that was quick.
Well, I'll tell you. You just don't wait a minute, do you? Pam?
I should have moved that one up to the top a little.
Yes. Well, no, it's probably good to the fellows.
No. The police chief's car that he had, which was a Taurus, was rear-ended, and it was totaled by our insurance company. So our insurance company, we received about eighty-five-hundred dollars towards the, for another vehicle. And I'm asking that we replace that vehicle with the one like we had received for the detective's car. So it would not be a Taurus again. It would be an Impala.
Detective's car.
Is this a...
Why not a Focus?
He needs a detective's car.
Yep, he's going off the state beds.
So in August, I was in the city and was rear-ended on Southfield Road, as Pam indicated.
We told you not to stop that car.
I'm telling you. So the Taurus was a two thousand eleven and had about a hundred and eleven thousand miles on it. We got about eighty-five-hundred dollars from the insurance company.
Yep.
I believe the contract pricing on new Impala is about twenty-one thousand, so...
Seven hundred and five dollars.
What is it?
Twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and five dollars.
Twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars, so...
Seven hundred and five.
Is this a Martin car?
It is not a Martin car. It's a plain, plain vehicle.
But it will be equipped. Will it be equipped?
So, right currently, currently the detective's car and the chief's car are not equipped. We're looking to add lights, siren, and then potentially adding a radio in there as well. That obviously comes at a, currently we carry portables while we're in there, but having a, a unit that's, you know, mounted in there that works off, you know, the car battery would obviously be optimal, but that comes at a price as well. So that would be something we'd look at down the road.
Adding it in, so it's not included in this twenty-one?
It's not included, no. No.
Okay.
So you'll be coming back?
Yeah, that's what I was...
Well, so we have lights for one, we have lights to outfit one vehicle currently. So it would just be the installation price for that, and then the second vehicle would then be extra. That may not happen, obviously, this year. We're going to have to look at the budget to see. We've had a couple, a couple of car accidents, unfortunately.
Couple of run-ins.
Some of that training include driving.
Move back to bicycles as a suggestion.
Remember, I was rear-ended.
The horses. All right, so we're done with that?
Yeah, make a motion, right?
Need to have a motion to approve the purchase of a new police vehicle for costs not to exceed twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. The city council will consider the purchase of Civic Plus Recreation Software. I think the, this is one we discussed earlier that we got to this, we might want to
Spank it.
Table this to our next meeting when the Parks and Recreation Director would be in attendance to more fully explain this proposal and what it hopefully is supposed to do for us. So do we have a motion for tabling this item to our next meeting?
So moved. We'll table this item. Table the, table the bid for the Civic Plus Recreation Software.
Was there a second?
There is a second. Second.
Oh, there is a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The city council will consider, number G is, will consider an agreement and resolution adopting inter-local agreement formally establishing the Oakland County Tactical Training Consortium. The chief might want to explain that.
Yes, please.
What that is.
Yes.
And why we, or finally, we're putting this on.
So as I spoke earlier, we're talking about training. I was contacted by the Oakland County Sheriff's Department with the possibility of attending a meeting and joining OCTAC, Oakland County Tactical Training Consortium. There's currently thirty-seven Oakland County agencies that are involved. This would allow us to train with other jurisdictions on different, you know, different aspects of our job. The current training they're going through right now is an active shooter training. They've secured a building in Southfield, a vacant building in Southfield, and they have trainers from the FBI and other agencies that will run our department and our officers through this training for free as long as we're part of the consortium. They do a number of other trainings throughout the year. I believe it would be in our best interest to join this group and obviously take advantage of the training that they're offering us.
Thank you. Is there a making of such a motion?
I'll make the motion.
It's one oh seven.
To approve the attached resolution adopting binder agreement for inter-local agreement formally establishing the Oakland County Tactical Training Consortium.
Is there a second?
I want, I'm gonna, okay.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes, no.
Questions?
Joining this, there's no cost to it, from, at least from what I'm seeing out of the, I don't see a cost in here.
So the actual membership fee is two hundred and fifty dollars annually.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
Okay.
So then...
So this also gives us the ability, the, the group has also purchased all-terrain vehicles. So if we were to need different vehicles, as long as we put in for it ahead of time, we could actually utilize a couple ATVs or Gators that they have at our disposal. Again, it opens up a variety of different things for us to do by joining this consortium.
My second question to that is like, it doesn't have that in the agreement, a cost?
I have a bill that they've just sent us that we have not paid yet. So I have the actual bill.
I'm just saying the legal, the contract that they want us to sign, should that, the cost be in the contract?
It is under their bylaws that the board, the OCTAC board, the consortium board can set their own membership fee as part of their organization. So that's the two hundred and fifty-dollar cost, I'm assuming, is a product of that board. It's not, it's not part of their bylaws, which we're opting into, but it is something that, year to year, that cost could fluctuate. I don't know historically what it's been.
I don't know, honestly. I've, I've actually only been able to take advantage of one meeting so far. It's something that we've never been involved in, and I wouldn't have known if it wasn't for the Sheriff's Department calling us.
What do, what do we do in, in return?
They're asking for us to train with them. It's, it's basically kind of an agreement that if something were to, a disaster would happen, that we would send officers that have been trained with them, that we would be able to respond uniformly to any type of disaster situation.
Okay. I mean, that makes sense, but I...
Which we already, we already have a, we already have an agreement amongst all the Oakland County agencies anyway.
Right.
So...
So to piggyback off of that, so all of our officers would be trained, that two hundred and fifty covers?
That's correct.
Really?
But again, we have thirty-seven agencies, so it's probably going to be pick and choose as we go through. I don't know if the first round, we're going to be able to get everybody trained in the active shooter, but there's, again, there's training going constantly, so...
That's, that's quite a deal.
So if they need us, we respond?
Correct.
If we need them?
Respond.
They respond.
Correct.
Excellent. I, I like...
There is an opt-out, too. So say they raise the cost to twenty-five-hundred dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars on, on thirty days' notice, we can opt out of this, this agreement.
Okay. I mean, it, I don't see a downside here.
There isn't.
No, I don't think there's.
It's a great opportunity.
It's a good thing to work together.
Absolutely.
All be on the same page.
Actually, the training that, really, the law, all law enforcement training now is actually to train multi-jurisdictional, to bring the fire department in, bring in your DPW department. Everything is to, to, so that we can respond together and know how each other are going to be able to respond and what each other's capabilities are. So this, to me, is just uniform of what we need to do.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. That completes our list of action items. And City Administrator, do you have any updates for us that you wish to share this evening?
Not at this time, thank you.
Pardon?
Not at this time, thank you.
Not at this time, okay. The City Attorney, do you have any legal updates for us?
I have nothing, nothing for you tonight.
Okay. Is there any other unfinished or new business that council members wish to bring up?
Yes.
Okay.
One, I really appreciate everyone who came out yesterday for the suicide awareness and prevention vigil. It was very touching, and I think that it was something that, well, I don't know if you know, that the month of September is Suicide Awareness Prevention Month. And I think it's something that we need to talk to, talk about, not just as individuals, but as leaders of our city, police force, teachers, parents, everyone to come out and kind of hear the stories that was happening. It's kind of shocking to me just to hear some of them. So I appreciate that. Also, most people might have already heard that one of our business owners was killed this morning.
Not here in Lathrow.
Not in Lathrow Village. Let me be very clear. It is over on McNichols in Detroit. But Dante Boxer, or Box, from the Something Unique Flores, was killed this morning on his way coming to work. I, just happened to hear about it, so I don't know anything more than that, but if I do, I will let people know somehow, some way.
It has been on the news today. I think all the local channels have had it on as of the four, five o'clock, nearly, so there will probably be some follow-up reports tonight.
And if you met him, he was just such a really nice guy. He was only thirty-two years old.
Only thirty-two.
Yeah, he was a really nice guy.
Younger than my youngest son, so that's...
So just to keep his family in your prayers. And then last, as some people may know, that I do some missions trips out of the country, and I was just informed, I'm not going, but I was just informed, the group that I work with is going to Puerto Rico on Friday. They are flying out on Friday. And I have a list of everything they need, and I know this is probably not the right place to say it, but they need a lot of feminine items to be collected. And I have a list. It's socks and batteries, flashlights, toothpaste, underwear, soap, shampoo, conditioner, deodorant. And so what I'll do is I'll put a tub out, let's say Monday, so I guess I'll put out a tub tomorrow. If you have those things, if you want to donate, the group that I go with...
Could you provide something to, that he can put on the cable?
Oh, absolutely.
That they can wrap off here?
Absolutely. And if you need a tax write-off, I can get you that also. But as you know, they're looking at Puerto Rico to be out of, without electricity for maybe four months.
Hospital size.
It's fine. Everything that you have, it was, they'll be flying out, I think, I think they said Friday. So, yeah, I'm done now.
Any other items?
I have a couple, too. I wanted to, but you know what? I meant to ask you to, Pam, if we could get, there was, we had asked for a list of the contracts so that we could stay current on the city contracts, who has them, et cetera. And I'm wondering if we could get that list updated, the contractors that have contracts with us. Just have a total list of those? Okay? I, I meant to ask you that earlier. And then the business lights, we talked about that a few times, the, the...
With the lights on them?
Yes.
Yeah, that enforcement action was started. Building officials making the rounds, one by one.
Yeah, because they, I'm getting...
Then they're engaging.
Notes about that. And then I just wanted to thank everybody. It was kind of, it was a good day. It was a little hectic, the shred day. We had over eleven thousand, seven hundred pounds of paper that was shredded, shredded. So that means that Lathrow really did participate in avoiding fraud, in avoiding fraud. We had over a hundred hot dogs, three hundred, three hundred and fifty cars. And it was a little hard at first because we had so much going on here.
You didn't shred the hot dogs.
We didn't shred the hot dogs, but we, we had, we had ice cream and hot dogs. It was, it was a good day and a challenging. I want to thank Officer Becker because he stood with us because of the parking situation. But it, it turned out to be an enormous success because we all worked together when the issues came up, and it was a lot of fun. So AARP is going to do it again next year. And also want to remind you that the coffee and cream, coffee hour will be October seventeenth. So it should be fun, and we invite you all to join us. October seventeenth, Lathrow Coffee and Cream Hour.
What time?
Six o'clock. Six o'clock. And actually, I was, I was going to ask Dante, the flower... And actually, I was, I was gonna ask Dante, the flower business, to be here, 'cause he, he was a wonderful guy. Do we send resolutions or anything as a city to him? 'Cause he was a, he was an added bonus to our city. And it would be good if we could do that. Get the council to sign, so that's all I have.
Just a quick reminder, we're in, I think about two weeks now into the use of the new bins for recycling. It's barely big enough for my house already, you know. But I think I included in our newsletter came out an urging, urging Lathrow residents to redouble their efforts when it comes to, we've got a much more sizable bin now for each household. It's one that's on wheels, that'll easily move to the curb. It's easy for the trash people to pick it up and dump it. That process is automated. We are one of the lowest ranking of all the SACRA communities in terms of our percentage of solid waste that we recycle. And it's extremely low. And I think that the feedback from SACRA is that already they've seen the, and all of their communities, including this one, a doubling already of the amount of recyclable materials. If you have questions, look at the newsletter because it tells you what items can go in that, which ones can't. There are some things that still have to be treated differently or separately. So, just, I can't remember what page of the newsletter it's on, but it, there's a whole page devoted to that subject, so urge you to look at it and recycle, recycle, recycle. Anything else, anybody?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please, I have a couple of announcements. The first announcement I'd like to make is the close of registration, it's gonna be October 10th. If you're not a registered voter, please register by October 10th before 4:30 PM. Our election is gonna be on November 7th. So you have to be registered in order to participate. If you're not registered, to be registered by October 10th. Also, there, we are gonna have an open house here, the city hall, on October 3rd between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM, that's in your, your town newsletter. And it's gonna feature the different departments throughout the city. And my feature will be our new election voting machines. I'm gonna have one of those out to show everyone how to use. I brought a test ballot up today just to show you, and I don't know if you can zoom in, but I do have it on the website, the new ballot. It's gonna be an eight and a half by 11, ballot size this time. And we used to have the ovals on the ballot. This time we have rectangles and they switched the side on which we darken the rectangle. Now it will be on your left-hand side and it's a rectangle. So it's different from the oval, it's switched sides and our ballot size this time is eight and a half by 11.
Bring your glasses. Bring, bring your glasses.
This is actually, yes, please bring your glasses. So please come out on October 3rd. And like I said, I have a sample ballot on the website. It's one posted on our board downstairs as well and I just wanted everyone to feel comfortable and know what the new ballot size and the new look that we will have. And I think that's all.
What time, October 3rd is the...
Between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, appreciate it very much. If there's no additional business to come before this council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
So move and second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being here.